Call of the meeting to all, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item on the agenda is Robin Sunquist, Director of Food Services. Robin, would you come to the mic, please?
Hi. I'm here tonight to let you guys know about a really good program that we're going to be doing this summer. We're doing the Summer Food Service Program. So, we're going to be offering breakfast and lunch at Knox Trail for anybody 18 and under, for free, from July 6th through, I think it's August 21st. It's going to run, breakfast is going to be 8 to 9, lunch will be 12 to 1. Adults can come too. Anybody over 18 can come, but they have to pay. So, it's a $2 fee for breakfast, and it's a $3.50 fee for lunch. We're hoping to get a lot of volunteers. We're putting posters up, Big Y, Price Chop at the library. I'm going to see if maybe the town hall can put a little note on their queue outside. WXLO is going to do a little thing for us on the Mary Knight's Mom's Corner, I think it's called. So, hopefully, we can get a lot of publicity and get a lot of people to come. We're really kind of hoping to get some volunteers. We have a couple of kids from the high school that want to do their hours. I guess they have to do so many hours a year for graduation. So, we're hoping a couple of those kids will come in and help us out, too. Just even if it's to direct people to the right place or to cross it off, you know, we have to do like a little tally sheet. Everybody that comes in gets a line through a number. So, it's pretty easy, pretty basic, and trying to stick to the same favorite. I went for the top 15 lunches through the month, trying to keep their favorite, you know, trash can tacos and stuff like that on there, to get them in, to get them to come in and eat. If they don't come in and eat, the program won't work. So, that's it. That's my whole speech.
Any questions for any board members? Well, thanks for your efforts, Robin.
Simple, thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is Subcommittee Appointments. We've had discussions about subcommittees in the past. It was always my position from the beginning that I didn't believe in subcommittees, and now having been here close to two years and see the issues that we're still dealing with and trying to get over the hurdle on, I think that it might be apropos to give subcommittees a chance and see if we can get better coordination with what we're trying to do, have the committee be better informed, and have a tighter relationship between the committee and the superintendent as we move forward in the next few years. So, I have, I put together, you have a copy of it, I've established five subcommittees. There's going to be a Subcommittee for Finance, for Capital, for policymaking, for Curriculum, and Personnel Committee. I've taken the liberty to appoint members to positions that I thought they would be most effective in. The Finance Committee, the intention is to have Mr. Cludia, Mr. St. Peter, Ms. Messier, and myself as the alternate. Superintendent Crowe and the Controller Gary Suda will be the district liaisons. The expectations these, this committee will meet, select their own chairman. Chairman will schedule and post the meetings through the Administrator's Secretary, taking into consideration superintendent's calendar. You'll be responsible for taking minutes and following the minutes of the Administrator's Secretary to be prepared and distributed to the full school committee. The duties that I list for each one of the subcommittees are general in nature. I'm going to leave enough parameters so that once the committees meet, if there's issues that you would like to have added as part of your duties and stuff, the Chair will certainly be open to that, and I welcome your suggestions. But, to get started, for Finance, you'll be responsible to review the annual budget and non-budget accounts, review and address the audit report recommendations, review monthly reports on revenue, expenditures, and revolving accounts, provide recommendations on all financial matters of the district to the school committee, advise on in-year transfers to school committee as necessary, and negotiate with all bargaining units. I think it's important to understand for all the subcommittees that you do not act on behalf of the school committee, do not take any votes on behalf of the school committee. You're simply a recommending body to bring stuff back to the full school committee consideration. On all the subcommittees, the chairperson will be the spokesperson for that committee in all regards. The next one is Capital. That committee will be comprised of Mike Ethia, Angela Napton. You two had already started the investigation on Capital, and because you were so far along with that, I just added myself as an alternate to that because you're quite a ways along in the work. You've already established some of the things we have here as duties. I'm not going to go through the other things that are standard for all of the subcommittees, but this committee will identify capital needs of the district, identify capital needs of individual schools, recommend priority listing of capital needs, coordinate capital needs with the selectmen of both communities to get on the capital needs list, investigate energy alternatives, coordinate energy assessments, and establish a short-term and long-term capital needs budget. The next committee will be Policy Committee. It's probably been some 20 or 25 years since the policies of this district have been reviewed. It's an important part and function, and really the foundation of how this committee should be operating. That committee, I'm appointing Wendy Pellchat, Jim St. Peter, myself, and Superintendent Crowe will be the liaison working with us. We will conduct a continuing review of the policy manual and recommend areas of change, amendment, deletion, or creation of policies. We'll develop policy drafts for review and approval by the school committee in accordance with district policy. We'll assure the consistency of all policies with the school committee's approved governance model. We'll coordinate an annual review by the school committee of the governance model. And then, all of these appointments will take effect as of tonight, and they'll run until June 30th of next year until new appointments are made. Next committee is Curriculum. That committee is going to be made up as Heather Messier, who's an educator in another system, Angela Napkin will be on that committee, along with myself, and Superintendent Crowe will be the liaison. When I say that I've got myself on these committees, that's just as the chairperson of serving as an alternate on all those committees, I'll try to be present in as many of them as I possibly can. The duties of this committee will be to discuss and exchange knowledge regarding trends, issues, and best practices in curriculum, instruction, and assessment. We'll review curriculum topics of interest to the public in order to make recommendations, report out to school committee and to the public in regards to APA courses, Common Core, MCAS, PACC, and vertical articulation. Understand and discuss the impacts of budgetary changes to curriculum, instruction, and accountability. We'll understand how data is used to ensure accountability. We're going to help build a vision for what our schools should look like in the future, and we'll make recommendations on all curriculum matters of the district to the school committee that will move the district to a Level 1 status. And then, the last committee will be a Personnel Committee, and this is something I think is needed tremendously. In some of the training with mass school committee associations, we were asked several times whether or not we had a Personnel Committee, and the gentleman that heads that up, Glenn Kucha, who has been a wealth as a resource to the Chair and to the school committee, highly recommended to have a Personnel Committee. So, we will have one. It's going to be comprised of Mr. Cludia, Mr. Ethia, Ms. Pellchat, and myself. Superintendent Crowe will be the liaison. Our duties will be to coordinate the annual evaluation of the superintendent, to report back to the Board explaining the need and purpose of all newly created positions, to review all job descriptions and proposed salary prior to posting positions, to coordinate with Finance Committee to make certain that proper funding is in place prior to posting any positions, review postings and make certain that we are compliant with all collective bargaining agreements, review all employee contracts and make recommendations to the Board on salary benefits, and review all administrative contracts for context and equity, and keep the Board informed. As I said, I took the liberty to make those appointments. If any members feel that they're not particularly skilled to serve in that capacity, or have some type of conflict that they don't want to serve, they'll certainly entertain assignment to another committee. But, I did try to split this up so that no one really has to serve on more than two committees, and with the exception of Budget and Finance where we tried to have three only because of the wealth of work that's done in there. So, does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns about what I presented to you? If not, then the Chair would ask for a motion to approve these appointments.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Messier. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item on the agenda is a financial report from the Control of Mr. Suda.
Mr. Chairman, so I've provided everybody with the financial report. It's no different than the one we had the last time, except I've added on the proposed transfers that I'm looking to get approved tonight. And as I've mentioned in the past few meetings, I've shown these transfers on our expenditure reports, and we were kind of waiting to get closer to the end of the year to make sure we had sufficient funds. So, the two transfers that we're looking for tonight are, the first one is to transfer $139,696 from the various accounts that I've listed here to the line item that'll allow us to put that money into the Supplemental Reserve Fund, which is established by the special legislation that went along with the deficit borrowing. So, this amount of money should have been part of next year's budget. We weren't able to do that, and we felt it was appropriate to take that money from the current year's surplus and put that contribution into the fund. Once we make this contribution, there'll be somewhere in the vicinity of $350,000 in that fund. And next year, of course, as long as we have the debt, we continue to have to make a contribution, which is an increasing percentage of our operating budget. So, I'm looking to transfer $20,000 from the District Technology Coordinator's account, $5,000 from the ELL Coordinator's account, $20,000 from District Professional Development, $5,000 from Special Education Contracted Services, $20,000 from the District Guidance Testing Supplies, $20,000 from Special Education Psychologist salaries, and $49,696 from Active Employee Health Insurance, for a total of $139,696.
Okay, why don't we take these separately? Does anyone have any questions in regards to those transfers? Any board members have questions? No? All right, and not a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather on a roll call vote. Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Mr. Suda?
The second transfer is for the purchase of a pickup truck to replace one of three ailing pieces of equipment that we have in the district. This was in process when I got here in January. At the time, I think that the district was looking to lease a vehicle, but unfortunately, the vehicle they were looking to lease wasn't able to be built in time to get us through the winter. So, at this point, we wanted, again, to wait to make sure that we had sufficient surplus in these line items to be able to purchase the truck. So, this will be a purchase, not a lease. We've already specked it out through the state bid list, and it's $60,000. And I'm proposing to take that from East Brookfield Heating, $5,000, Wire Village Electric, $10,000, the high school electric, $12,000, and Active Employee Health Insurance, $33,000, for a total of $60,000.
Any questions from members? If not, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather on a roll call vote. Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Is that it, Mr. Suda?
That's it.
All right, the next item on the agenda was the Treasurer's Position. I'm going to take the liberty to move that out of order only because the next item after that is the CPI report from Frank Abell. I think, once we have that report, then we'll go back to the discussion about the Treasurer's Position because I think it will flow better, members will better understand why we'll be suggesting what we do suggest. So, having said that, Frank, you'd be up next, and we'll get you set up. I'll ask members to take a seat in the front here while the presentation is being made, and then we will come back to the, to our seats with any questions or comments. Yeah, please put your mics down.
Thanks.
No, that's fine, doesn't matter.
to be here tonight and to make this presentation in public session. Before I go any further, one of my associates that's worked on this project is here, Sherri, Sherri Cursey, and she's the current business official in Ashingham, Westminster. There were two other people that were working on this project. Sherri Matthews, who's currently working in Tuxbury as the business official, and the fourth person was Tammy Crockett, who is working as a business official in Monty Tech. I'm not sure about this, but I think we're close to 90 years of experience working in school districts in business official positions, our support staff. So, I think we come to this project with a wealth of information, knowledge, and success. And I don't say that in any type of egotistical way, but I don't think any one of us would be in the positions we've been in, as long as we have, if we weren't successful. The next thing that I really would like to identify and comment on is Gary's back there helping with this presentation. But, having said that, over the last six, seven weeks, we really began this project back on May 1st. Gary has been an incredible wealth of information and a source of help, constantly throughout all this, excuse me. So, this project really is a focus on student activities. And what I've just given to the school committee members was something that wasn't in the report, and perhaps should have been in the report. And really, what it is, is the listing of all of the transactions, and there are some 85 student activity transactions that have occurred so far this year. And they amount to roughly $68,000, just over $67,000, $67,101. They're listed chronologically, I guess, the way they occurred, in most cases, but maybe not all, no, because they're done by department. They're sorted by department. So, the focus of this study really is on student activities in the Spencer East Brookfield Schools. We had a wonderful opportunity to look at a draft of this particular project last Thursday with, again, Gary Suda, Chairman Hayes, and Superintendent Crown. During that hour and a half, two-hour session, there were some questions that came up, there were some comments, there were one or two refinements, like the number of schools, I had it as six, and it should have been five. And I believe those are the types of changes, which numbered no more than three or four for the 10, nine, 10-page report. What people also have seen, especially committee members, is approximately 125 pages of appendices. The 125 pages start off with an entrance memo that includes a description of who CPI is in this particular project, where we've been, and what we've done. I did that very briefly, talking about the three associates and myself in this project. If anybody else's information, and they know at least one or two committee people have done this, our website is available to anybody and everybody. And I would say, in summary, we've been in operation since 1986, and I think this is the 286th contract that we've entered into, and we'll be completing in the next week or two. Other than that, I think that takes care of the, all of the introduction. There was some very, very short background information about the population and the enrollment in the school district. The most notable is that the enrollment in the last three or four years, or given the data that was supplied through the Internet as well as from the central office, the enrollment in the Spencer East Brookfield Schools has gone down 16%, approximately 16%. In this day and age, that's not surprising that it's gone down. It is maybe surprising in that the population has yielded that decrease. In East Brookfield, the population has gone up, whereas the population in Spencer has gone down. The live birth rate, I'm sure, has gone down dramatically, and by that I mean maybe 2%, 3%, 4%, but certainly not 16%. So, the next particular section was the methodology, how we go about something like this, and what we did with the help, again, of Gary Suda, we looked at maybe 35, 40 transactions with a focus, again, on student activities. This is its entirety. We did this on Thursday, May 20th, if I recall correctly. And present for that meeting were Mrs. Crockett, Mrs. Matthews, and myself. And we looked at the transactions in terms of what our concerns might be, should be, could be. Having said that, at the end of the two, two-and-a-half, three hours that we spent looking at these transactions and discussing among ourselves, we all worked on a draft of what the project should be reported out as, and that's what the committee members and Mr. Suda and Superintendent Crown looked at last Thursday, and that's what the rest of the committee received, I believe, over the weekend in the final report that was sent out. I think the report speaks to a lot of issues in terms of the student activities. And without further ado, the next slide is where I'd like to kind of start this report out. This is a certification, okay, of exemption for sales tax. Now, again, I don't want to be so simple-minded, but this is incredibly important. The school district municipals are exempt from sales tax. There were several transactions, A, where sales tax was paid. What was also true was the sales tax was reimbursed, sometimes to a staff member, sometimes to a significant other or spouse of the staff member. But, first of all, to be paying the tax and then getting reimbursed, none of us could figure that out. This is, this is really an important issue. It may only be a certificate. One of the things that surprised Mrs. Cursey and myself, you don't have any deadline. There's no expiration date, okay? I would say of the most recent nine or 10 districts that I've been in, they all had an expiration date. That is incredibly fortuitous because it's a pain in the neck to renew. So, this exemption is there, and people are using it, sometimes not appropriately, and sometimes the reimbursement for it is just not appropriate, just not appropriate. Okay, the next one? Wait a minute, before I go any further, any questions? And I'll stop my, I'll stop myself if there's questions. Is that okay?
I agree. Are we, like, how you independently to review all this?
I'm sorry?
Is, how you independently to review all this?
That's not a question for me, I guess.
Frank, wait, this is going to work. You're going to have a presentation. The Board will go back to the table. The Board will have questions first, and then we'll open up to the floor.
Okay, so I'll go through it, and this won't really take that long. So, you heard what we're doing. Okay. So, this next slide? Okay, this next slide is one of the last two pages. It's a listing of the Spencer Banks accounts for the school district. There's some 18 accounts there. Some of them are very old, some of them date back to 19, the class of 1973. Let me see if I can recall correctly. 75, 79, 80, and one other in 80. Those accounts should not be held by the school district. Once a class graduates, that money is to go to the offices of that class. It's unfortunate that that continues to be under the authorization of the Spencer School Committee and Spencer Administration. There are other accounts that are not listed, either there or in any of the other accounts. I believe there's a class of 1937, 34? There's a class of 1934 that also has the money somewhere in the district. Unfortunately, those monies, we could not find either on a general ledger or on a financial statement. So, we don't know how they're getting reported or whatever. We heard in the last week why these five accounts are being held, but I'm not, I'm not sure in my mind, given my experience, that it's appropriate that they're being held by the, by the town, by the regional district. Okay, next slide, Gary? So, what we did was we ran a listing of those accounts that are on the general ledger that are in banks, and we have some comments. Notably, on the right-hand side, the notes indicate that, again, one of the, one of the accounts should not be held by the school district. It's unknown why it is, all the way through. And the columns, I can't even see the top, is it? The second and third column from the right, Gary, what do those say?
You mean the account number? Included on the general ledger?
Oh, okay, included on the general ledger or not, okay? And again, the general ledger is incredibly important in any, any entity, but in a school district, it's kind of like the financial bible. So, I can't emphasize enough the importance. I would call it paramount. So, interestingly enough, what came up at the meeting last Thursday was, I think it was the Superintendent, Superintendent Crown, am I right with this? Indicated that, you know, this last paragraph was what the belief was by a lot of people in the school district. And again, this is not a reading test. It's big enough so that everybody can read it themselves. This is the end of the report. And if, Gary, you'd go to the next one? This is the sentence right before. So, what preceded these two sentences, or two rather long paragraphs, were a series of findings and recommendations based on what the three or four of us saw when we looked at this rather random sampling, with some selection by Gary, of these accounts that are within here. Quite truthfully, again, I can pinpoint something like, I don't understand how or why postage is being paid by student activities. If you go back and you look in the appendices, you look at the rules, you look at the regulations, nothing allows for postage to be charged, and it was a significant amount. And it wasn't once, it was two or three times. I think in all, there were nine or maybe 10 recommendations and findings. They're rather generic. They should be generic at this point because in this process, what you have is you have people who are coming in from different districts with experience, looking at this. We're not auditors. We're not people from the state. We're just saying, we're looking for the practices that are used. And with that, you've got our findings, and you have our recommendations, and I don't think there's any more slides, are there, Gary? Might be one more. Yeah. That's it. So, I think, I'm sure, that there are some questions that committee members would like to ask, and maybe, is this a time for that?
Yeah, we'll go back to our seats. Yeah.
Can we get the screen up?
Obviously, I don't know the landscape. Do I stay here?
Sure, yeah. All right, so members have had the report since Friday. I'm sure that you've had an opportunity to go through it and may have questions. The chair will open it up and give members an opportunity to ask questions of CPI and Associates. Anyone have anything that they would like to address in regards to what you found in your package? I guess I'll start, then, Frank. If you could just address a couple of issues in the report. Item number two, you speak about payments for membership dues.
Mm-hmm.
Athletic director, can you just briefly explain and give us some other examples, if you have them, as to what was happening here?
Well, again, let's look at the focus of student activities. Funds are coming in, supposed to be used for the students directly. These membership dues probably should be come out of appropriated budgeted funds at best. In terms of, let's say, athletics, maybe there's an athletic revolving account. But to be taking this money out of student activity money, I just don't think it's appropriate. But I'm also going to ask my associate. Oh, maybe I'm not. Did I miss anything?
Were there other instances besides the athletic department where memberships dues were purchased, or was that?
I think one other department.
One other department, okay. You already touched on the reimbursement for taxes. You had that listed in your report as one of the items. You also talked about donations.
Oh, yeah.
Could you speak to that?
Again, for the three or four of us, we find it difficult to think that student money that's, you know, collected and from that collection process, it's being donated to an entity that maybe the students agree to or don't agree to. Throughout all of the transactions that we saw, we did not see a student advisor initial or sign that they agreed with the processing of that particular transaction. It would seem to me, and again, I'm just trying to be common sense logical, the kid from Boston, if a parent or a student was going to make a donation, they'd be making it on their own. I'm not sure what the relationship is between the student activity collection and expenditure of money for a donation is appropriate. Who's deciding what that donation is going towards?
Is there?
Have you ever seen a donation? She's only been a business official 10 years.
Okay. You also mentioned that there was disbursements for startup money?
Yeah, and again, it seemed that the transactions that we saw were better processed to either appropriated funds or a revolving account, again, using student activity funds. Again, I'm being repetitious. I know I'm kicking this to death, but as the committee members saw, there are some very specific regulations put out by the state, put out by Masbo, and students are students. And the activity funds, they're activity funds in the simplest of ways. I don't know if you're going to get to the curriculum one about bowling?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
May I go to that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, student activities, you know, every now and then, there's a, there's a field trip. Where I lived, there's lots of buses, lots of field trips, whatever. The Freedom Trail is really important. Collecting money for that particular activity within that particular curriculum, whether it's history or something else, there's probably a connection, probably. That is in the eyes of not only the teacher, but the principal, whatever. To have a consistent, regular process where students are paying for this activity within the health program, under the auspices of bowling, and again, I've got nothing against bowling. My wife is from the Midwest. She was a bowler as a teenager and all. But it's hard to kind of swallow that that in itself is curriculum-oriented activity, and as such, those funds, which is significant, should come out of student activities.
You also mentioned that you touched on deliveries to private residences with items that were purchased through, could you delve into that a little bit for me?
It's simple. Something that's bought by a school department is delivered to a school apartment. There's no other place to deliver it. You can look at a packing slip. You put the packing slip with the invoice to be paid, and it's simple, it's easy. To have something delivered to someone's house, regardless of who that person is, it's just not appropriate. You ever seen it? I saw it 20 years ago. No, it was a little bit more, 25 years ago, in a very high-capitol district where it just so happened that the business official was having a lot of equipment from craft, primary school, craft fair, was being delivered to her home. It wasn't appropriate. It wasn't for the school district. And immediately, what comes up is the question, if it's going to someone's home, is it part of the school district or isn't it part of the school district? And is there a delivery charge to that particular home? And is that in excess of what it should be, could be? And how does that become, again, student activities? I would say for the three or four of us that were involved in this report, this project, there was a lot that just simply was beyond us. We didn't see the rhyme, reason, or logic.
In that same section, you also referred to you found payments during the summer session going to family members in different departments, music, athletic, et cetera. Would you comment on that, please?
Yeah, this is a little bit more, not only complicated, but gets into more legalities. Your student activity processing in Spencer, I don't know if I could characterize it, but when you have either a staff member or a non-staff member, a family member, receiving funds, and it's not going through a process that you're seeing, where's the W-2? Where's the 1099? Where's the calculation for that? And in some of these cases, that was significant. The IRS has some very stringent amounts. I think in the report, we talk about 600. I know I'm using 650 in my business, so it might be, I might not have put the 5 where it should have been. But, you know, $650, I think that's the floor that someone can earn without getting a 1099. And if they're an employee, it may well be added to their W-2. If what we saw, the student activity funds are coming in, and they're being put in this account that either the superintendent and/or the school committee are never involved with, they never see it, then should it surprise me that it's not part of the budget sense software and that it could be part of the annual W-2 forms? I guess not. But then that also brings me back to, we couldn't see, and we did some research, but we didn't do a whole bunch. Who gives the approval for funds to be collected for whatever? Does someone in the schools just decide, well, we should take up a collection for sherit? Should we should take up a collection for office furniture? For anything, anything under the sun? Just take up a collection for it. Well, who decides that? Who approves that? And if there's no approval, then whoever, the staff member or the people involved, if they're not staff members, then they have full ride to use that tax-exempt money to collect it. The total amount, perhaps not known. And we really didn't see any evidence, and truthfully, we didn't look a whole bunch. We didn't see a lot of receipts, you know, money coming in. We saw a lot of receipts at the central office for, Gary, I'm going to need some help here, preschool and before and after school.
Right.
And building.
Building use.
And building use. We saw the receipts. We saw how the staff member was taking them. And I think she's doing a very, very good job, the way she's doing it and what she's doing it. And she is taking in a lot of money. And she has the receipts. But here, again, the way those receipts, the way those funds get transferred to her is a concern. Sometimes it comes through into office meal, cash. And again, Gary, I'm going to seek your help. I think you and I processed, we took to the bank, we did the receipts and all for $57,000 last week, and I would say of that $57,000, I would say of that $57,000, there must have been several thousand dollars cash to be going through office meal. I wish I could get it, but I can't.
Also, under item six, you cite some instances, you say, of the athletic director's wife being reimbursed for payments that seemed to have been made by the athletic director. Can you explain some of that to us?
No, can't.
Okay.
I mean, we saw transactions. We saw the name. We did the, what we reported in the report is, as far as we could go, we should go.
Yeah. Okay. You also mentioned that you found instances of student activity monies being used for catering purposes. Can you speak to that?
Again, the other two business officials and myself saw transactions on sheets of paper that indicated that there was a luncheon that was paid for and was catered by someone, and those who were in attendance ate lunch. Other than that, it's as simple as that. At least, that's what we saw. And Gary, you're holding all 85 of these sourced documents.
Right, correct.
I mean, they're going to be, they're going to be available for, they're going to be available.
Mr. Chairman.
Just go to you.
I'd like to make some comments, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I do have a question or two for Frank, but I certainly would like to make a few comments first. You know, I'm disappointed by the context of this report on a bunch of different levels. Back in 2013, we had a situation that came before this body, and it was abuse of the student activity account at Lake Street School. And at that time, we went through the process of public, not a public hearing, but a private hearing with the individual responsible for that at the time. And the outcome of that was, we wrote a new two-page document, a new two-page policy regarding student activity funds. And I was part of that. That was adopted by this board unanimously back in October of 2013. And that two-page document states a lot of different things, but one of the, it states it time and time again, "Student activity funds shall be expended exclusively for student activity purposes." And here we are again, two years later, a complete failure of the system again, where we find that student activity funds are being used for a lot of things, and from what it sounds like, I will keep an open mind about it, but it certainly doesn't appear that these are for student activities. There's a culture problem in the district of Spencer and East Brookfield, and that culture has to change. Talked about it time and time again, don't seem to get through, but it's certainly the tail wagging the dog in this district, and I'm really disappointed. And I'm disappointed equally with the employees of the district as I am with our auditors. I will tell you that since I've been on this board, I've taken an active role in reviewing expenditures, in reviewing audit reports, in reviewing transfers, and everything financial in this district, to try to do it as right as possible. And certainly, the management letter that we received back in 2012 from Scanlon, then, well, hold on, before I say that. Scanlon and Associates, they've been our auditors for the past three years. We were written up for two pages of errors regarding the use of student activities. They weren't considered material weaknesses. They weren't considered significant deficiencies from an accounting standpoint. They were simply considered comments and recommendations. In 2013, I was elected in May. We received the audit report in the fall, and in the fall on that audit report, the management letter, again, there was two pages regarding student activities criticizing the district as to how they were doing student activities. Two pages worth of findings. Again, you know, it was listed under other matters, not under significant deficiencies, not under material weaknesses in our report. That's when we decided we had to take action. That's when we did the investigation at Lake Street. That's when we rewrote the current policy that sits before us, which mirrors state law. It virtually mirrors state law. It states, as it's beginning, "In compliance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 47," and that is student activity fund law from the state. We put the policies and procedures in place. In this year, or last year, 2014, the management letter from Scanlon Associates, again, had two paragraphs, not two pages, two paragraphs, which is extremely disappointing, given the 95-page report that we've just received. Two paragraphs on school, student activity funding in the school. And those two paragraphs are very benign, and they weren't critical, and they weren't specific. It was very benign. You know, our auditors that we hire on an annual basis to do the auditing for this district are a tool to this board. As Frank has explained, if it's not reported in the general ledger, as a board member, there's no way for me to understand that that money's even being spent. It's impossible for me to guess at it because the expenditure reports that we see refer to the GL accounts and only the GL accounts. So, it's an impossibility for us to trace that, unless it's reported that way. You know, it's just extremely disappointing. Back in FY '14, and I don't remember exactly what the timeframe was, but there was a citizen that came to one of our meetings, went to the mic under Citizen Input, and accused the district of paying for services in advance. And I'll never forget that evening because I left here shaking my head, saying, geez, that can't be right, that can't be right. The next morning, I spoke to our superintendent at that time, I spoke to our treasurer at that time, and I spoke to our business manager at that time, and I addressed the issue with each one of them, and asked them if that was happening. And I was told no, that that wasn't happening. So, Frank, my question on page eight of your report, item two. You state, "A transaction at the end of 2014 for a prepayment was processed for over $80,000." Actually, you write it in, $81,601.17 to a vendor by the name of CDW Government. Subsequently, documents were identified and reviewed. Subsequently, documents were identified and reviewed wherein earlier in the school year, $125,000 was prepaid to this same vendor with subsequent ordering and receiving of equipment. Do you have backup for that? Is that, because I didn't have any backup in the report. Did that actually take place?
Chairman. Excuse me, Mr. Moskis.
The, I'm concerned about this question because of the implications that are there. And there may be a necessity for an executive session to have the answer to that question.
All right. Mr. Cludy, do you have a question?
Mr. Chairman, just, I heard what counsel said, I'll leave the question alone. But I will tell you, as I sit here tonight and read this, I certainly see misfeasance, I certainly understand there's probably malfeasance, and could be potentially criminal activity that's gone on in this school district with these accounts. I'm disturbed, I'm upset, we've tried to put the best practices in place, and, you know, part of the program, when we wanted to have an audit done of these accounts, we had a treasurer that was leaving, and I didn't feel it was appropriate for that treasurer to leave the district and somebody else to come onboard and be able to start finger-pointing, so I said, let's do an audit, not thinking that any of this type of stuff was gonna show up. But be that as it may, it's here, it's in front of us. And I will tell you that I wanted this report, from the day we said we would do something like this, I said it was gonna be a public, and done publicly, we weren't gonna hide behind executive session. Now certainly Attorney Moskis is our legal counsel, and if he says I can't get an answer to that except in an executive session, I'll wait for the executive session to get the answers. But I don't think we need to take this and put it on a shelf. This report needs to be further investigated. In fact, I will tell you that I think we need to investigate the student activity accounts from all the schools in this district and go back five years and see what we find, because I think it's deplorable what's going on. These are not our funds in the district, they're not the teachers' funds, they're not the administrators' funds, these are the students' funds. And this is wrong.
Thank you, Vinnie. Just one second, Frank. In light of Vinnie's comments, I will be able to substantiate some of what he said, because I sat at this table when Mr. Serba came down here and stood at that very mic and said that we were paying for services that were not being funded. Weeks or months later, Mr. Fornia came down here and stood at that same mic and said, you need to do a deeper audit as to what's going on. We received anonymous letters. As Mr. Cludy has said, we went to those people that were responsible and in place at the time, and we were assured at every turn that this was not taking place. We were flat-out lied to by the people working for us in this district. So I agree with your recommendation, I think it's something the board will have to consider, and maybe we do need to go back five years and get a track record on this and see exactly what is happening. But in light of counsel's concern that this may be rising to a criminal level, I can understand the need to have to go into executive session. What I'd like to do is let Frank comment, and then we would have to have a vote to suspend the rules, and then a vote to go into executive session. But I would like to complete the rest of the items on the agenda, you know, before we go into executive session, if that's okay with the rest of the members. But Frank, you wanted to make a statement?
I'll be very, very brief. Your comments are well-taken. We were charged by the then-and-now chairperson to do a report on student activities. On pages eight and nine, there are six other findings, whatever you wanna call them. They are under the heading of "Other Considerations." As a president of CPI, I felt that it was imperative that we included those six items. Again, they're not part of student activities, but they were brought to our attention, and having brought to our attention, we felt that we should be reporting on them. And we did, we feel good about that, and we're just gonna leave it there, and if there are other concerns, I would certainly welcome an invitation to attend that executive session.
In that, the other considerations, you mentioned, you made some comment about Medicaid billing, and that our funding was dropping from a projected $120,000 to $80,000. Are you suggesting, is that because we didn't meet some deadlines or something, or something wasn't properly reported? Did you make any comment in regards to that?
My response to that is, we just saw the projection 120, we were told the projection 120. I went to Gary Sutter and said, so is this 120 gonna occur? And he said, no, I'm hoping that we're gonna get 80. Now, it might be a whole bunch of reasons, okay?
Yeah.
I'd be remiss to say that even in Ashingham, Westminster, we did a separate study just on that particular case. We did maybe four or five of those studies relative to what is being submitted, the accuracy of the submission, the completeness of the submission, the timeliness of the submission. A program with $100,000 is not to be laughed at, especially where that's money coming back. So again, that was one of the six items that we felt that we should comment on.
Yeah, okay. Well, I would request that you and your associates stay with us to be able to go into executive session, because we are certainly gonna need you to give us some direction and point us in the way to how to pull the plug of this pool so we can see who's swimming without a bathing suit, because that's where we're at at this point. And we're gonna need your assistance to be able to do that, so if you could stay until we get to that.
But you're not suggesting that I'm gonna wear a bathing suit.
I'm not asking that at all, no, no. I don't even wanna envision that, Frank.
You should see me in a jumpsuit.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Dave.
I'm referring to the question relative to the, question relative to funds that were paid, I'm not referring to the report in general.
Right.
I'm referring to that because of the possible implications involved in it.
All right. Then, what the chair would intend to do is let's complete the rest of the agenda, and then we'll have a motion to suspend rules and go into executive session. The next item on the report is discussion about the treasurer's position. If members recall, and for the new members that weren't here, we had made a decision at the time when our treasurer left, we had hired CPI associates to come in and be the treasurer, as well as do the review of student accounts. They were hired for the months of May and June. And subsequent to that, we often on entertained the idea as to whether or not CPI associates would be interested in staying as our full-time treasurer. Now, we're a couple weeks left to go, we have this report in front of us. It would be my feeling as chair, I think at the very least, we should probably entertain a request to CPI associates to at least stay onboard for a couple more months until we have some decision as to the direction that the board wants to go in. You know, our options are to repost and advertise, we didn't get a lot of response when we did it the first time, and that's how we ended up wrapping those services in with CPI. But do any other members have any thoughts or comments on that? Mike?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I feel strongly that maybe we should look into having CPI continue on, at least so we can get some more answers, follow-up on this report that we have here.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments, Vinnie?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to, is that we refer that to the Personnel Committee that you set up this evening.
Okay.
And let the Personnel Committee talk about it, kick it around, and bring it back to the full board. But I agree, I think that CPI should stay on, and we should try to keep them on for the next two or three months, and I think we have our hands full right now.
Yeah. Do you wanna make that as a motion, to make the referral to Personnel?
That would be in the form of a motion.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, the next item would be hearing.
Mr. Chairman, given that it's the 16th of June, I guess then I would, you wanna make a motion, Mike, to keep them on for another three months?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, stay on through the end of the three months.
Naturally, that would be contingent upon the chair speaking with CPI and coordinating this, okay? So Mike will make that as a motion? Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vinnie. Any further discussion on that? Okay, on a roll call vote on that one, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving on, next item is hearing for visitors. Any visitors wish to be heard? Yes?
So as you know, I'm Lisa Pogarsky, I am...
If I could just stop you right there before you even get started?
Yes.
If this is where I think you're going, we're not gonna go there tonight, okay? Now, if this is about the books, you were informed at the last meeting by myself and the superintendent, and your dad was as well, there's a proper procedure to go through this, this is gonna be a learning experience. You were instructed to go to the principal.
We did.
If you weren't satisfied with that, you were to go to the superintendent's office, and if you weren't satisfied with the response there, then you were to contact the chair, and you would be given an opportunity with your parents to be on the agenda, not to do it at a public session. There's a proper procedure to be followed to do this. We have every interest in hearing from you and what you have to say, but you must follow the process in order to do it.
We...
Ma'am, this is a public hearing, and you're gonna be recognized by the chair if I choose to recognize you, and you won't speak out again. Okay, did you have a question for me to...
We, I did talk to Mr. Bayshaw earlier today, and I don't understand why I can't address it to you, because as a school committee, your job is to give us the best district we can, so we can have the best education we can. And I don't...
You're correct, but with that, there's rules, and there's procedures that have to be followed. You sat here tonight and listened to the fiasco that's going on here.
Oh, I understand completely.
And you know what it's about, young lady? It's about adults not being able to follow the rules. And we're not gonna allow you as students to start that same practice. So you are not gonna be allowed to present that at a public hearing, no matter what the applause or request is here, and you're gonna follow the proper procedure, as you were told at the last meeting, and your dad was told, and told me, he clearly understood what the procedure was, and you are now gonna go to the superintendent's office, and if you don't get satisfied there, then you're gonna contact me as the chair.
Yes, I understand.
And I am gonna put you on the agenda at the next meeting with the principal from the high school, and your parents, and we'll have a full discussion. We wanna hear what you have to say, but you're gonna do it through the proper procedure, and that's gonna be the end of the discussion. Now, if you've got something else you'd like to address, I'll give you the several minutes to do that, otherwise, we're gonna go on to the next person.
Yes, I would just like to say, isn't hearing from visitors supposed to be public questions, what you wanna ask?
They are limited unless they involve a procedure within the district, and this certainly involves a procedure within the district. And that's why you were told the last time that that was the procedure you had to follow. You understood it, your dad understood it, and I'll be more than happy to give you that venue to do that, but you are going to follow the procedure. That's the end of that discussion. Is there anyone else that's interested in being heard? Yes, ma'am?
My name is...
Go to the microphone, please.
Actually, my daughter was encouraged to come up here and stand.
By who?
Two, myself, I'm her mother. As you can tell, we look alike. I've actually been up here quite a few times, I'm sure there's, well, probably only two of you that are familiar with me, addressing concerns and my opinion in general. You know, personally, the kids should discuss things in general, and yes, there's proper procedures, but obviously, they're not being supported. That's why they're here, because the proper chain of reporting isn't helping them.
Well, I don't think, I think you're incorrect, they haven't followed the proper chain. I'm gonna state it one more time, and then we're gonna be done with this issue. You're gonna go to the principal, if you're not satisfied, you're gonna go to the superintendent, if you're not satisfied, then you're gonna contact me. And then you will be sitting here as an item on the agenda, and we'll have a full discussion with any of the students, any of the parents, and the principal.
That's fine, I'll encourage them.
That's the last discussion we're gonna have on that issue tonight.
Okay, sir, I have something else, I was just making a point. A couple of questions. So the school district report is outdated from 2012 to 2013. Now, this audit, that is part of the new report that should be coming out, is that correct? With CPI? If you look actually on the Spencer website, it actually has the complete school district report and review?
Again, there's a procedure that we have to follow, we're not at the point to discuss that yet, but we are...
Is it upcoming? That's what I'm saying, is it actually going to be in there?
Be upcoming.
Okay. Also, regarding funds and things like that, I, actually, I just had a question. Was there at all any certain funds approved for office furniture recently?
We're gonna have a report on that on the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Sutter's gonna give an explanation on that.
Okay. And the purchase of the $60,000 truck, there's a lot of mechanics in the area, and people that actually sell used vehicles that would be happy to offer their services.
If you saw these vehicles, ma'am, they are beyond repair, you wouldn't sit in to ride to the end of the parking lot.
No, I know, but brand...
Nothing left to do to them.
But $60,000, brand-new, is kinda like, you know, and not leasing.
One of the problems is, is you can't ask people to perform functions if you don't give them the proper tools. And when we're taking staff and putting them in a vehicle, and asking them to go out in storms, and to plow into sand, and put themselves at risk, they've been at risk for far too long with the equipment that they're using.
I agree, and I think that statement you just made actually applies to the school system itself not giving the proper things.
This is probably the first maintenance vehicle that's been purchased.
Yeah, which I don't, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making a point.
Yeah.
I have to commend CPI, thank you so much for doing this. I've actually stood up here, I've been coming to these for years, I gave up a little while ago, because I was so disappointed, just for, you know, taking insight on stuff that's going on. And I kind of, as a mom, wished you guys would've listened sooner and really actively got involved.
Well, give us a break and give us a credit for...
I am, I am.
Doing more than any other committee.
Which I appreciate, I'm kinda sad that my daughter's going into her senior year, and it's now coming to face, after all of the times I've actually come in here and almost have been asked to leave. But I appreciate the fact that you're going to look into this, I hope that for the future kids going to school now, that this is going to help them. I'm sad that my daughter is in that era of the gap.
Yeah, all right, thank you, your time is up. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Sir?
Yes, ma'am?
I had a couple budget questions, I did come up with her, because I was going to, but I won't.
Go ahead to the mic. This is not a question-and-answer period, this is a comment period. If you wanna make a comment about budget questions or the budget, you can feel free to do that.
It is a comment, but there is a little bit of questioning in it.
This is not a question-and-answer period, but go ahead and make a comment.
I, as I was going around and looking at textbooks, I ended up in the library to look at regular books. I was told that our average copyright date for fiction books is 1992, which is a little over twice as old as they are allowed to be by current standards. Also, I was told that the library budget, that the librarian is given to make updates and adjustments, was $0, nothing. Some other teachers also mentioned that the money they were given for supplies, the budgets for basic classroom supplies, was also nothing. Is this, as we are going through this new budget and looking at possible mismanaging of funds, is it going to be brought to light that some parts of our schools aren't receiving proper funding, or sometimes none?
Yes, and that's the responsibility of the principals of each school. The principals meet with the superintendent of the district, and they develop their policy, their budget, and they bring forward to the superintendent those items that they want. So what would be a good activity for you students would be to go to the principal, go to the library, go to all these places that you feel they're deficient in, work through the process, and have your principal make the recommendation in the next school committee budget as to what they need. There's a procedure to be followed, and everybody has to follow it. But that's open to any school, to any one of the schools in the district. But it's a process that's done through the principals and through the superintendent. What comes before the committee is what has been brought to the superintendent by the principals of each school, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
I just really would like to respectfully ask if you could explain to us what the purpose of hearing for visitors is, because it seems to have changed drastically in the last year. Kevin, you yourself, many times when you were sitting out there, would stand here and ask questions, and you were given answers, but that doesn't seem to be the case. I wondered if you could explain it.
I'd be happy to do it for you, Mrs. Berthew. The difference now is we're following school district policy. Before I got on the committee, we didn't follow school district policy, it was a free-for-all, it was a circus. And now we're following school district policy, and that's what the policy calls for, is to handle the hearings exactly where you're here. You can't come in here and complain about staff, teachers, administrators...
You can't come in here and complain about staff, teachers, administrators. You can't come in here and ask questions. It's a comment period. That's it. It's a comment period.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Gary Stokka.
Anyone else? Yeah, Paul? Now, I guess where you count whoever made that comment, and please don't speak out again because you won't be staying, if you have something that is of issue to you, there's a process, even for you as an adult, and if you have a problem, you call the Principal of the school that your child is at, and then if you're not satisfied, you go to the Superintendent, and if you're not satisfied, then it comes to the school committee. We have to operate this way. It's the only way to operate, and it's the way our district policies say we have to operate. So, don't shoot me. Shoot the person that made the policies, but until this policy gets enforced and we change them, this is what we're hung with, and we're not going to ignore them. Sir?
Paul Fournier, 76, excuse me, 76 Paxton Road, Spencer. The transfers that were made earlier today, are they going to affect any of the services that they were taken from? I'm sure, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions. Parents are going to ask that. Might be something you guys might want to address. And it was made mention that you were going to go back possibly five years and look at some of these other things. I think you need to go back maybe even further, maybe 10, because we got Dr. Crowe, who's only been here for a few months. We've had two other, a temporary Superintendent who wasn't very good, and another one who wasn't very good. I'm guessing you have to go back maybe 10 years. So, I'd like to give you guys at least some consideration to think about that.
All right, thank you. All right, the, yeah, ma'am, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Abigail Meyer. Processes, I have just a quick question about processes. To bring a question up at the next, the next one of these meetings, what process would I have to go through to make it a subject on the janitorial services up at the high school?
Contact the Superintendent's office and give them the issue that you want to have addressed and stuff, and then a determination will be made when to put you on the agenda. But that's certainly appropriate. Call the, call the office, and that's where you get on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Next item is school committee comments, agenda and items for next meeting. At the last meeting, Ms. Messier had asked for some further explanation for the purchase of furniture and stuff, so I didn't answer at that time because I didn't have the answer that we were looking for. Since that time, I've asked the Comptroller, Mr. Suter, to put together an explanation as to what it was, so, Mr. Suter, if you would proceed with that, please.
Sure. So, when we, when we made the request for the transfer, I might not have been clear on what we were buying, but, you know, we're buying desks and chairs for, not, it's not just for the Superintendent's office, but for many of the offices in the, in the Blue House and the Administration Building. And one of the things, one of the reasons we're doing that, when I first got here and I talked with Dr. Crowe, it was amazing to me that we have issues of security in that building. We have confidential records, we have things that are, you know, items that have been stolen out of offices, and none of the desks are secure, none of them lock. We have many of the file cabinets that have personnel information and, you know, critical information for employees in the district. None of those lock. Until recently, we didn't have any offices within the blue building that would lock. So, it was critical that we make these changes to get, you know, to address the security issues in that building. So, the other thing that's even more obvious than the security issues is the fact that many of the items that are being used in that building, none of them match, they've come from other places, many of them, many of the desks and chairs are broken, they don't, you know, they don't function properly. So, it was just, it seemed like the right thing to do. So, there's three desks and three chairs, and not just desks and chairs, there're desks with credenzas, and they have, you know, the appropriate amount of space to store records, and they lock, and they're secure, and, and they're used. We're purchasing used furniture. We're not purchasing anything new, and, and we waited till the end of the fiscal year to make sure we weren't taking anything from other programs and funding, and so, you know, we, we feel it was appropriate to do it, and if you saw some of the, the office furniture that's up there, you know, office furniture, trucks, it's all part of the educational process. We, all these things are needed to make the whole thing work, and functionality is important in a day-to-day office. So, that's what we bought. There were, like I said, three, three desks and credenzas and chairs, and some guest chairs for, for the waiting area.
Thank you, Gary. I appreciated the explanation when I got it from you. I certainly was aware of the security issues in the building and the fact that none of the offices locked. Payroll doesn't lock, health doesn't lock, none of them did. And I mean, we have a responsibility to follow certain state statutes and stuff in regards to confidentiality. We have janitorial staff that's in and out of there. No one could lock up any of their rooms, none of their desks could lock, so it really was an issue of sensitivity to security and stuff in order to have this done. And unfortunately, at some point, so much of this has been let go for so long, I would guess that some of the stuff in there is probably back from when the original building was put up, and hasn't been brought, certainly, up to meet any current statutes and stuff. So, anyone else have any questions in regards to that? Not, okay. Then the next thing is open to any school committee comments or items that you'd like on the agenda for the next meeting. Our next meeting is the 23rd. Anyone have anything that they would like to request?
Chairman.
Mr. Cludier.
On our next agenda, I would like to put on a discussion about hiring a new auditing firm.
Okay. All right.
And I'd also send it to the Administration to come back with recommendations on maybe a few auditing firms that we can consider.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else have anything? You haven't had an opportunity to notice yet because it hasn't gone out, but on our next meeting for the 23rd, the Chair has put together a standard agenda format, because at the last meeting, the young lady that was here that came in and wanted to speak, the meeting was over, and there was no citizens' input at the end of the meeting, and we had typically always had two spots versus an input. That's not a requirement, that was something that was done, just because whoever was Chair wanted to do it at the time. We've changed that format now, and at every regularly scheduled monthly meeting, that format will stay the same that you'll see in the next meeting. There'll be a report from every subcommittee, there'll be a report from the Superintendent on every monthly meeting, there'll be a report from the, from the Comptroller, and then there will be hearing or citizens' input at the end of the meeting after all of the reports are done, so that people have an opportunity to hear what's said, and then have an opportunity to speak, and not, not miss if they're not here, when the hearing is done in the beginning and not at the end. So, I think it will give a better flow, I think it will be better for people that come that want to get up and make a comment and stuff, but I think it's important for even Board members to understand that we're operating strictly under what district policy is, and I'm probably being even too lenient than what I should be, because the only items when somebody comes to the mic that's supposed to be discussed is items that are on the agenda. I've been a little lax on that to try to give people the leeway, even though some may not think that that's what I'm doing, but if I really ran this as tight as what I should be doing it, there'd be very little opportunity to comment on anything unless it was something that was on there. There is always the option for anybody that wants to be heard to contact the Superintendent's office, to tell them what your issue is. You don't have to speak to the Superintendent, you can speak to the Administrative Assistant of Missy. Either Dr. Crowe or myself have the authority to put people on the agenda, and if it's something that is, that certainly needs to be addressed, we will certainly give you an opportunity to come in here, but when it comes here, we have to follow the rules and regulations and the policies that are in place, just so that we can have a civil meeting. We've had meetings here where this place was packed, and if the meetings weren't run the way that they were run, we would have been back to nothing but a three-ring circus, and we can't have it. There's safety issues with that as well. People get excited, they get involved with closing a school or issues going on, there's procedures that have to be followed. And this is a learning experience, hopefully, for the students, as well as maybe for some of the adults, as I said, so that we don't, we don't, as a Board, have to deal with the items that we're going to deal with when we go into executive session. Angela?
Yeah, I just had a quick comment, and to kind of follow up with that. I was where you were sitting, gosh, 17 years ago, when we went into block scheduling, actually, and the same exact thing that's happening to you now happened to me, where I didn't know what I was supposed to do. I came because, with a group of people, because we were upset about something, and I was told the same thing, and I had, we had to do the same procedure. I want you guys to know how impressed I am that you are here tonight, and I'm applauding you for what you're doing, and I really hope that you continue to follow through with this. The reason why we're doing this is because we want it on the agenda, so that anybody that sees we're going to talk about this and is interested can come and have their two cents. So, that's really the reasoning behind it, and I'm just really, I hope that you can bring even more students next time and be even, you know, and be passionate about this, because it helps us to know what we need to do in the coming year. So, thank you.
In line with Angela said, there's also an opportunity, we have a public hearing on the budget before it's approved, and that's for the citizens, and that's where your input comes in to question the items that are in the budget. So, when this comes up the next year, and if you've still got these concerns and this issue, you should be right here raising your hand and saying, hey, what about me? What about the books for this class? Or whatever the issue is. But there is a process for you, and it is, it's an open meeting, and it's a budget hearing, and they're all advertised and scheduled, and you're free to come in and be recognized and to speak before the boat has already sailed. Our budget's already locked in at this point, but you come in and exercise that right before the budget gets finalized. Okay? And thank you for coming. All right, so, what would be in order now would be the Chair would have to have a motion to suspend the rules, and that would require a two-thirds vote. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludier, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Messier. On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, we need a motion to go into executive session. Is there a motion by Angela? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will reconvene after the executive session. Okay, at this point, we're going to reconvene back into session out of the executive session. Before I move on with discussions and motions on advice from Counsel, I think on behalf of the Board, we would like to thank the Comptroller, Mr. Suter, and Superintendent Crowe for bringing to the Board's attention the issues that we are now going to have to deal with. This is not what either one of them came here to do. The Superintendent came here to put in place necessary tools and move this district back to a Level 1 district, and the Comptroller came here to bring professionalism, which he has done, to his office, but neither expected that this was going to be the area that they were going to find themselves in for the past several months. So, on behalf of the Board, I thank the both of yous for, for bringing the issues that have been brought forward to the committee's attention. In light of that, Counsel, there's motions that we have to vote on?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there's one motion coming out of the executive session, and then there's three other motions that, as a result of the discussion, that I'm going to suggest that the committee consider, the discussion of the Treasurer presenting his report tonight. Out of the executive session, the, this motion would be relative to the technology equipment acquisition that the committee authorized Counsel to refer to the Inspector General the matter and request the Inspector General to investigate the acquisition of equipment in the technology area and investigate the payment of funds to the person for whom the equipment came to the district.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Angela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye.
The second motion, Mr. Chairman, after discussions with the Superintendent and